We're going to go ahead and reconvene out of closed session. We're going to reconvene out of closed session, former Mayor Mejia.[11.01][11.01](Laughter). Thank you. City Attorney, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council has reconvened from closed session with no reportable action taken.
Okay, so, thank you. Next on the agenda, before we start the pledge, which will be led by Councilmember Chirko, and then the invocation, I'm going to ask interim City Manager Les Johnson to introduce your staff, please. Before you do that, we have City Clerk Wendy Quintenar and City Attorney Michael Douth that's here, and then Les, if you can introduce your staff.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Councilmembers, this evening, we have Police Captain Chris Carr, we have our Finance Director, Eric Henderson, we also have our Physical Sustainability Manager, David Kane, we have our Recreation Manager, Ron Noda, and Recreation Manager, Penland Noda, we also have our Associate Manager, Tom Oliver in attendance, also is David Hunt, our City Engineer, and our Fire Chief, Ron Rupes.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we'll do the pledge, then if you would remain standing for the invocation.
Please join me in saluting the beautiful flag of the United States of America. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your heads. Gracious and heavenly Creator, thank you for this day, for this wonderful city, and for the people that we get to work with, and that we get to represent. I just pray and ask that you will lead us to do the people's business, that we can do what is right, and be good stewards of the wealth that you have bestowed upon us. I also pray for protections for those who wear the flag of the United States on their uniforms, the firefighters, the police, the first responders, and those that are near and abroad, protecting our rights, our interests, and keeping peace in the world. With all this, I just also ask for those here in attendance, special day for some people as we go through changes and transitions, and then for those that are here for the first time in their studies, that you will enlighten them, that they will learn something, and know to grow up to be leaders and changers of this world that you've left for us, and these things we pray in your great name. Amen. Okay, presentations. I will just ask Council to remain up here, and I'll go forward. You have two. Okay, we have new officer here. Chris, if I can.
We'd like to introduce Officer Flynn. He just graduated from the Golden West Police Academy, August 9th. Came to us from Brea, where he started as a cadet, and then moved his way up into campus security, and, you know, most importantly, he came to me in February, and I said, "I want to be an officer for your department." So, he ran down to Golden West, got enrolled that day, and we sponsored him all the way through, so we're very happy to have him onboard.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I'll do my very best to protect the great citizens of this city, and uphold pretty much everything I took an oath for, for everyone in this great country. Thank you.
And be safe, though.
Thank you.
Okay, next, something really special. I have a commendation here for a local resident, and I guess former employee of the hospital over here. So, Linda Kathleen Luer, please. So, okay, Wasutubi, right? Okay, well, I thought we were closer. So anyways, on this, just wanted to give this commendation to you, there's a lot of wheres', but do want to thank you for your service, and for being a longtime resident here in the city. And then, you have family here?
Yes.
So you want to bring them all up?
Sure.
So please, and here. A couple of things, so we have this for you, and then Jerry, if you wouldn't mind coming in, for doing on behalf of Alan Lowenthal's office. So Congressman Lowenthal, I guess.
She said she's going to stay.
So you want to just stay from Lowenthal?
Yes. So, on behalf of Alan Lowenthal's office, they wanted to apologize for not being able to be here, that's on me, I waited a little too long, but they are presenting you with a flag that's flown over the Capitol, and there's a certificate. We thought it was already folded and ready to go for the box, but not, so we'll bring it back to the police, and so this is the flag, and it comes with a book regarding the flag, and it's key. And then that is an additional certificate of recognition for all the time that you've put in, and donated to Los Alamos to take care of.
Is that it?
Yeah. Do you want to have a picture?
Robert, you want to come up?
Come on up.
Okay.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Do you want to say something?
Oh, yeah, I would. I, first of all, I'd like to thank the City of Los Alamos, Mayor, and all the council members. For my sister, my younger sister, who I've always tried to keep up with, especially when it comes to commitment, I've been blessed to be born in this city, and to be able to work and take care of not only just my family members, my community, and I'm just so thankful that I have been able to take care of this community, to give back what they've given me, and I can't thank you guys enough, I'm totally undeserving of it. This young man deserves much more credit for putting his life on the line. I get the, I get people that behave themselves, he doesn't. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mary.
So item number six will be oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, and remarks are to be limited to no more than five minutes per speaker. I do have three blue cards, or anything else, four? And I'll just go ahead and call them out as I have them, so it looks like, oh, Brea? Is it? Ovensia?
Hortensia.
Hortensia?
Yes.
Yeah, Hortensia, Bertrand, sorry, I could not read the writing.
No problem. Hortensia Bertrand, and I'm a resident of Los Alamos, and also on the board at St. Isidore's Historical Plaza, and I brought a handout for each one of you who are present, and I gave some to the audience already, with the events that are coming, and the events that will go on through the end of the year. We have the Plaza Picnic, Picnic at the Plaza, this Thursday, that I hope you can all come by, listen to music, and enjoy the Kowanis, who are making some hot dogs and hamburgers for sale. And then also, we have the Second Sunday, of which the next one is Ballet Folklorico on September 8th, and we have Hawaiian dancing following the next month, and then on November, is the main reason I came up, is because we're having our Second Annual Veterans Day Celebration, and we're having the Long Beach City College California Battalion that recreates the Civil War brass band. They'll be performing along with the Los Alamos Music Department, that will be singing the service songs, and so I invite all of you to come and join us, and especially those who are service personnel, to be recognized. And I'm hoping that in the future, we'll be able to partner with the City of Los Alamos to do some recognition for our veterans. We found that a real need last year, a lot of people commented that they were so happy that we were doing something, and they hoped it would become an annual event. So, that's about it. I also wanted to introduce Bruce Murphy, he's our current President of the Board, and it seems like a lot of you already know him, and he's returned to Los Alamos, so we're happy to have him back and on the Board. How many of you have been to St. Isidore's? I'm just wondering. Okay, great. We're also in the process of seeking the state historical status, because it's the last public building that remains untouched. I think the museum was a fire department, but they modified the door, which disqualified them from becoming a state historical site. So we're in the process of seeking state historical status, and we provide a lot of social services already, part of the city, the Kowanis are now meeting there, there's a lot of other services, and so we hope that it will become a community center that can bring more attraction into Los Alamos, and more events to recognize citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And who do I give these to?
Okay, next, Shelley Henderson, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Shelley Henderson, I'm here as the editor of Orange County Breeze, with a couple of announcements. First off, we got a bulletin out from the Orange County Healthcare Agency this afternoon, the first diagnosed human case of West Nile virus. Please take care in your mosquito abatement activities, dump out those dog dishes frequently, empty the saucers underneath your potted plants. If you go out, wear long sleeves, and use insect repellent, we don't want to have a second diagnosed human case of West Nile virus. September events coming up, St. Hedwig is having their Autumn Fest, the 16th through the 18th. St. Irenaeus is having their rebooted Fiesta, the following weekend, the 20th through the 22nd, and the Los Al Chamber is having a Hero's Luncheon on the 19th. I would like to remind everybody that the 2020 election cycle has started. It will be, the primary will be on March 3rd, which is three months earlier than usual, so you will be bombarded between now and then with political announcements. I do want to caution everyone, be careful when you get solicitations for donations in your email, don't just assume that they are from the person that it says they are, and if it's from outside our area, and you've never heard of them, be very wary about donating to outside causes, because they may just start up a campaign in order to get the donations. Finally, if you want more information, please check out our website, www.ocbreeze.com. We have an awesome community calendar stuffed full of events, and the Sidecar Podcast, the latest Sidecar Podcast, features Father Ben Wynn from St. Irenaeus talking about their Fiesta. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, Michelle Brower, Verizon?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I was actually asking to speak on item number 11, which is the ordinance, so I can speak now, or speak later?
Oh, I beg your pardon, so we'll hold off.
No worries.
So yes, if you don't mind, thank you. Next, we have Barbara Farrell, Ms. Farrell, good to see you again.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here, first of all, I want to thank you for fixing the drainpipes on green, so now I don't have to complain about just getting a plastic thing saying your street's flooded, and it just worked fine, and it was great, so I appreciate that. Mayor Kusamoto, when you were not mayor, you proposed having 10 tiny houses for veterans as part of our commitment to the homelessness project, and I was hoping that that was going to go forward, and I would like to support you with anything that you do to make that happen. California has 25% of all the United States homeless veterans here, and we have approximately 400 in Orange County, so 10 beds would be 10 beds. The other thing I'm here to talk about is the support of balanced energy solutions, and I'm seeing that, and read about it, and I'm seeing that it's being supported by a fossil fuel, a gas energy source, and that it, it looks like it's just keeping all our options open, but in case, in the case of clean energy, I think we should all be supporting the cleanest energy available, even if it's a penny or two more in our city. I don't think that the dollar amount would make that much of a difference, and I have grandchildren that I'm considering in this situation. So I hope that you will not pass that resolution, because it will limit our opportunity for clean air. Thank you.
Thank you. And James Peterson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is James Peterson, I am the Government Relations Manager for Southern California Edison. We've had an opportunity to have a little bit of a correspondence about the resolution, that's item 10G. Southern California Edison's request would be that this item be pulled, and that we would have a longer conversation with the city about energy policy. Southern California Edison works very closely with SoCalGas, we are probably one of their largest, if not their largest customer, so we're partners with them in providing energy for Los Alamos. Where we differ with SoCalGas on this particular resolution is we have different strategies for how to address the state's greenhouse gas goals. Just like Southern California Gas, we strongly support energy choice, and just like SoCalGas, we have challenges in terms of meeting the state's renewable energy goals. So, we are concerned about this resolution, because it's based on some inaccuracies. First off, it suggests that there's a mandate, it actually says the word mandate in the resolution, that there's a mandate for state electric only. That's not the case, there isn't pending legislation or regulatory policy that suggests that. What the state is advocating for is for energy companies to meet certain goals in terms of carbon emission and greenhouse gas emissions, it's not technology-specific. We also are struggling a bit with the theme of the resolution, that it's a balanced energy solution. SoCalEdison was not consulted on this resolution, and has, has no piece of this resolution at all, so it can't really be balanced. The other thing is, in terms of energy balance, we know that SoCalGas provides the vast majority of home heating sources, it's roughly 95%. We would like the opportunity to compete in that space, and we believe in market competition, that we have a product that is efficient, and that would be supported by customers, but there really is pretty much a monopoly, that's not competition, that's not balanced. The state has set goals, but again, there is, has not been any mandate. What I would suggest is that the city council consider a number of questions about this resolution. First off, what is the purpose of the resolution? To what audience is this resolution going to be offered to? Is it legislators, is it regulators, and for what purpose? Unlike what we would typically see approved by city councils, this letter is a support or opposition to a particular bill or a particular policy, but this is very broad, so it's unclear for what it's going to be used for. The mandate that it's referred to in the resolution doesn't specify a single piece of legislation that actually uses the word mandate. I think it's important for the city to know what mandate that SoCalGas is talking about. Also, what's the benefit for the city? If it passes this resolution, what is, what is the outcome for the city, what is its benefit from supporting it? There's also some question about the affordability issue that's raised in the resolution. SoCalGas currently has a pending general rate case that seeks an increase of nearly 40%, that's pretty significant, especially as this is being promoted as an affordability issue. Also, we would suggest that there are other options, this isn't really a binary choice of this resolution or nothing. There are other things that the city can, city can do that would support energy choice, it could be a provision in your legislative platform, you could take a position on a particular bill that you find limits your, your energy choices, and your options, and your local control. And there's also resolutions that have been adopted by other cities, like Huntington Beach and Rancho Cucamonga, which are very neutral, and that while Edison doesn't support those resolutions, we're not opposed to them either. So those are some of the options, and we'd be happy to sit down and meet with you, explain more about what our vision is for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that is it for the blue cards. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Let me come forward and announce your name. If not, we'll go ahead and close oral communications, and we'll go on to item number seven, council announcements. Dean, you want to start?
I provided a copy to the city clerk, so that she can include it. I've attended a community development update with the City of Huntington Beach, and our Acting City Manager, Les Johnson. I also attended the St. Isidore Plaza 20th City, 20th Anniversary Celebration, I participated in the Federal Executive Board Bi-monthly Meeting, the opening and 65th Anniversary at the Orange County Sanitation District, where they debuted their new centrifuge, the largest one in the world. Participated in the City Recognition Day at the Orange County Fair, and with a meeting later that evening with their Board of Directors. Also with the Sanitation District, they offered an opportunity to take a district boat out to the mouth of their discharge pipe, about four miles off the coast, where they capture fish and do testing to make sure that the fish are not being affected by their discharge. I had a meeting with the Orange County District Attorney, joined the mayor and city staff to a business visit to the West Ed facilities off Lamson, attended a Housing and Development Roundtable in Fullerton with Assemblywoman Cork Silva at the Fullerton Library, participated in the National Night Out at Little Cottonwood Park with other city staff and council members. I attended State Senator Umberg's Open House in Santa Ana with Mayor Kusamoto, participated in a training drill at Cal State Long Beach, and a ribbon cutting this morning at the Brain Facilities in Cypress. Conducted the Regional Military Affairs Committee on July the 23rd over at Joint Forces Training Base, and conducted the quarterly tour on August the 15th. On the military side, I attended a change of command at the Naval Weapons Station in Seal Beach, a change of command for the California State Military at J F T B, the promotion of Colonel Laney to Brigadier General for the 40th Infantry Division. Last week, I met in Sacramento with the Governor's Military Council for a summit, I'm going to provide a separate brief to provide the fellow council members with what transpired there. Had a promotion with the 79th Theater Sustainment Command this past Saturday at Joint Forces Training Base. Also joined the American Legion Post 716 and the USO by cooking hot dogs and hamburgers yesterday at the Naval Weapons Station, and that was for an organizational meeting for the 79th Theater Sustainment Command, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. So Mark, would you like to go next?
Sure. Councilmember Hasselbrandt and I attended a budget, our monthly budget meeting, wherein we finalized the list of available options to deal with our projected future budgetary shortfalls, that's item 13C, I believe, on the agenda, it's the first tangible product we have to present as a result of these meetings, and so we're proud to present that. I attended National Night Out, along with all of my fellow council members, that was a very nice event, considering it was put on for the first time by our city, so great job to the PD and city staff for putting that on. I attended the monthly Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control meeting, and my notes say that there have been no West Nile virus cases, but thank you to Shelley for providing an update, there is one human case now, there have been some other positive samples on mosquitoes, and nine dead birds. It's likely that the population of the 80s mosquitoes will continue to climb with the warm weather, these are the mosquitoes that bite your ankle, and then they move, and they bite your ankle again, and again, and again, the really annoying ones, so you're going to continue to see those, unfortunately, and just a reminder to, you know, to make sure you're tossing out any standing water, you're replacing any torn windows and door screens, you wear repellents when you're outside, particularly at dusk and dawn, and if, if you see any dead birds, or neglected pools, or anything like that, make sure you contact the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District. If we're all working towards this, hopefully our community will have less mosquitoes overall, and we can enjoy the outdoors, and avoid people getting sick. I attended the Starbucks Grand Opening, it's at Catella and Winter Circle, and it's a beautiful Starbucks, it's probably one of the nicest Starbucks I've ever been to, so check that out. I attended former City Manager Brett Plumley's farewell last Friday, and I know everybody else up here was there as well, and city staff, I saw a lot of the city staff there as well, and it was a really nice event to say goodbye to, to City Manager Plumley. And finally, I, I was honored to, to get a tour of the base, I had not had a full tour of the base, and I got that tour by Colonel Tom Lasser, and the base really does so many amazing things, some things that I, I was not aware of, and so, you know, I just want to say, again, we're really lucky to have that base here, and all that it does for our community, emergency preparedness, MedFly, which I was not aware of, and so many other things at the base. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley?
Yeah. I attended the Los Alamos Chamber Mixer a couple weeks ago, it was over in the shopping center where Green Street Interiors and Print Masters was, and they kind of did like a little trick-or-treat thing, you went from store to store, and found the latest food and drink, and stopped by, and visited the business owners and stuff, which was great. Our small businesses are our bread and butter, so it's always nice to support them, and, and find out who runs those. Did attend the St. Isidore Jubilee Celebration, that was really cool, because there's, there's a lot of founding families that still reside in Los Alamos, and to be able to talk to some of these people, that this is the third and fourth generation that are born and raised in Los Alamos is really cool. Had a meeting with Congressman Lowenthal, talked about a number of things over at the base, specifically trying to get some more federal funding for the runway improvements, we need about $21 million, so we're working with it on a state level through General Baldwin, and then also at a federal level, and if we get more, then we've got plenty over there that we need to do. Introduced him to the Sister City Initiative that I've been working on with Pochon City, he was very, very excited about that, was aware of the story, and was in full support of whatever we need from him, I said, "Be careful what you wish for, or ask for," because I will ask. And then also updated him on some of the things that we're doing with OCFA and the base, as far as trying to get the, the search and rescue train to be able to fly out of there at national emergencies, possibility of putting our new supertanker there, as the new residents, and some of our fixed-wing aircraft as well, so he was very excited about that, making J F T B much more a regional base that first responders can use. I attended National Night Out, I thought that was great, it's always great to see all the kids interact with all the first responders, and the fire truck was there, and that was always a hit. Did not attend, but OCFA once again was here a couple Saturdays ago, and they were doing their smoke detector installation on a Saturday morning, I think it was the Highlands that they targeted this time, and they were able to install 144 smoke detectors, in addition to do a lot of fire safety education, which was great, and, and make sure that everybody has current smoke detectors that work. So this is something, they come in here about every other year, and we try and pick a neighborhood, and, and really go in and just infiltrate in partnership with the American Red Cross, this is all free of charge to all residents. Did attend Colonel Laney's promotion to Brigadier General of the 40th Infantry, he was our key contact for the Sister City Initiative, he's been to Pochon City a number of times at the graduation, handing out diplomas, and this is near and dear to his heart, so it's always great to go and support him as he gets his star. And that's it.
Thank you. So, like, my colleagues here, so I was at the St. Isidore Jubilee, I attended the OC Fair Flag Raising Day, and it was Los Alamos Day, and so it's kind of really nice where we're featured along with some of our, you know, fellow electives from neighboring cities as well. The real cool thing we got to do is visit West Ed, this property down there on Lamson that's part of our city, and I think it's the first time in, whatever, since City Incorporated, that we paid a visit, so unless you missed out on a good tour, but Tom was there, and Megan was there, so it was really, very positive. I got to go visit Tom, Senator Umberg's Open House over there on the west side of Santa Ana, or east side of Santa Ana, and I also attended now General Mike Laney's promotion to Brigadier. And then- And I also attended now General Mike Laney's promotion to Brigadier, and then I attended National Night Out, and I want to say thank you to Captain Carr for pulling all that together. I heard that it was kind of your doing to make sure we had something for our residents, so really thank you for that. And with that, I think that was all I had really going on, so that'll close council comments, and I'll turn it over to city manager.
Honorable Mayor Councilmembers, it's kind of a different spot sitting here to speaking to you this way tonight, but thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to mention a few things here. First of all, we have an event coming up this Saturday. The Orange County Historical Commission, along with the Orange County Board of Supervisors, has invited council for unveiling and dedication ceremony that will be held at the museum against Saturday, beginning at 10 o'clock. And if you haven't already, you would like to attend, please let Wendy know to R S V P for that. And the museum has been serving the city since 1975 and is housing our former, the house of our former Los Alamos Fire Station. The building is being recognized by the Historical Commission, Orange County Historical Commission, because it's an adobe brick-constructed facility, and we know that those type of buildings are very rare, and to be able to have that right within our community, recognize and acknowledgement is great. And also, thank you to the Los Alamos Board, specifically to Margaret Kendrick for the historical recognition that's going to be made. Also wanted to mention something really quick before I pass an item over to Emlyn, and that is something that we're doing as staff. I'm going to bear some of my peers here. We're taking on a challenge, and we hope you can hold us accountable. There's a number of us doing the Biggest Loser Challenge over the next 90 days, so a few of us might be hangry when you come see us during the day, depending on what we're going through, but we're excited to have that opportunity to see what we can do as a team to come together and be prepared for the holidays and beyond. But wanted to mention that to you, so you can hold us accountable as we venture forward through that. And then to conclude our announcements tonight, I wanted to pass it off to Emlyn to announce to you an upcoming, a really exciting upcoming event.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. We have a brand-new event, our Los Alamos Family Dance, sponsored by Memorial Care, Miller Children's and Women's Hospital of Long Beach. This is going to be upcoming Saturday, September 28th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Oak Middle School Gymnasium. This is open to the entire community, to all families. It is a fundraiser for the Los Alamos Unified School District Elementary Schools. So when you go onto the city website, cityoflosalamitos.org, and find the little button, it takes you to the webpage, and you can purchase tickets. And when you go onto the Event Bar, you just select the school of your choice, and 50% of the tickets goes to the school of your choice. And we're really excited. We invite the whole community. It's similar to like a father-daughter, mother-son dance, but we wanted to open it up to grandmas and grandpas and neighbors and uncles and aunts and everybody who wants to come. Thank you.
Okay, that's everything. Okay, thank you, city manager. Okay, on to number nine, the warrants. So is there a motion for the warrants?
I'll move.
Hasselbrink?
I'll second.
Gross. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Kusamoto?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy, absent. Councilmember Chirco?
Aye.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Okay. Next up, we'll have the consent calendar. So all consent calendar items may be acted upon on one motion unless a council member requests separate action on specific items. So I'm going to pull D and...
To pull G.
G, so we have D and G. Anything else? Is there a motion for the ballots?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, passes 4-0. Okay. On D, I do not need a staff report. I will go ahead and move for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Chirco, second. Kusamoto, moved. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It'll be me, no. So pass 3-1. Thank you. On G, did you want a staff report? Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Sure, just a quick staff report would be great.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor Councilmembers, the Mayor Kusamoto and staff was approached by representatives from Southern California Gas with regards to an interest in bringing to our attention the idea of providing a resolution that would identify a customer choice and the importance of that when it comes to energy needs for the residents of Los Alamos. So as a result of that dialogue and engagement, staff coordinated with the SoCal Energy, or excuse me, SoCal Gas staff, and information they provided to us in drafting up a resolution and staff report for your consideration this evening. That's really the, it's a very brief summary, but that was a brief dialogue we had with them with regards to that, and that would conclude the report and certainly be happy to answer any questions that I can regarding this.
I just, the concerns that I bring up are we're doing a resolution, not on a piece of legislation, but something that a vendor brought to our attention. I think it's very one-sided. I don't know what the resolution will do for us. They use a lot of our hot-button terms, local control. I don't see how this is going to do it. We don't have the mandates. The utility companies do have these mandates from the state, so I'm not sure, doing a resolution at this early stage in the game, how that's going to support any kind of local control. And I think we're very premature into supporting any kind of resolution without knowing all of the facts from Edison and Gas and also the state and what they're going to be mandating. So I would be very much in favor of supporting something that ties to specific legislation and not just kind of this big idea in the sky that we're really not sure of the facts and how it's going, what it's going to look like in the end.
Okay.
I had the, I had the similar concerns. You know, as I read it, you know, some of, some of the resolution sounds fine. You know, we support clean energy and all of that, but it's very generic and there's no specifics, and the staff report as well. Similarly, I don't know what legislation we're talking about. I don't know what mandates we're talking about, and if we're going to vote on a resolution, I want to have all the information before us, or, you know, perhaps make it a more neutral-type resolution that states what we're for, you know, and if there's a specific piece of legislation, we need to be provided all that information and all that detail so that we can consider it fully before voting on it.
Thank you. Dean?
I'd like to make a motion that we refer this back to city staff, and they meet with the two utility companies, try to answer some of the questions that were brought up earlier, and make sure that this is in fact something that's beneficial for city and local control. And at such point in time, as you've had that opportunity to do that, you can bring it back to us.
Dean, would it be okay if I added a couple of things to that? Not only understanding what the utility companies are, but what the resolution means to us? What are they going to do with the resolution? What legislation is it tied to? Specific bills or titles of legislation? So we know exactly what we're signing our name to? And if we're doing a resolution this early in the game, what do they do with all those resolutions from all the cities? Who do they take them to? Who's the audience? I just think we need to understand it.
I'm fine with that. The comments made earlier dealt with local clean air, different strategies, both by SoCal Gas and SoCal Edison, the purpose, who the audience is. Make sure that we're dealing, if there is a mandate, that we're dealing that, and benefit to the city affordability and looking at the legislative platform. It may be, well, be included on our legislative platform, and we really don't need to do a resolution at this time until we get an actual bill submitted that's going to challenge us. We definitely want to make, and that's in the legislative platform, that local control is the primary factor.
So I kind of got lost, so, and there was a lot of, so the motion is to wait or to send to staff and...
Motion is to give it back to staff, ask them to meet with the parties and answer those questions that we've discussed and brought up, and then make a determination whether it comes back to us or not.
Okay. And then I think I heard in some of your discussion about maybe it's not yet time to bring it back? So I think it's kind of a question of right...
It may be covered under our legislative platform, which means that we don't need to do it until some type of legislation comes along.
So I'm still not clear, so I'm not clear in the, Michael, do you understand the motion? It's a lot of, I don't know if we can tighten it up?
I don't know that I can make it any more succinct, but I do think I understand the marching orders being given with the motion. I think in a simplified sense, we could say the motion is to refer the matter back to staff, to have staff meet with the two utilities who have expressed interest in this issue, and to address the questions that have been raised, not only by the council members but speakers at tonight's meeting, review the objectives of the resolution as it relates to our legislative platform, and to the extent a resolution is timely to return back to council, but ultimately, if we're premature, to hold off on that effort.
I think I just made it worse.
Well, yeah. I think, I think you kind of captured it the way I understood it. So there's no expectation to see this back here? Is that, would be a fair way, your motion is, that we can send it back to staff, have them work at some additional, whatever, hours into it, but then no expectation that we're going to see it back here next month or next year?
Correct.
But if it comes back, a lot more detail, a lot of the questions answered.
Okay, so there's a motion? I think I understand better. Is there a second?
Second.
So Chirco, Gross, Chirco, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, so passes 4-0. Thank you very much. And with that, move on to, oh, I do, before we go leave the consent, can you talk briefly Les to item C about the rejection of the storm drain pump? Because you mentioned it to me in a one-on-one, but just real quick, why was rejected?
Yes, sir. We believe, first of all, that the bid was misread by the person that submitted the proposal. It is 10 times greater than the engineer's estimate for that. Just to let you know, we have, there were seven bid packets distributed, and our engineering team has talked, followed up with six of those, seven, and we feel confident that we'll be able to bring back more appropriate bids to you later.
Thank you. That's just for members of the public. Thank you. Okay, on to 11A, Public Hearing, the first reading and introduction of ordinance number 2019-02, zoning ordinance amendment 18-03 concerning small wireless cellular installation. Staff report, please.
Thank you, honorable councilmembers. City adopted the current wireless telecommunications facility standards that we have in place back in 2006. Those standards focus primarily upon the macro wireless systems or the large monopole antennas that you see throughout the region. Technology is changing in that the antennas systems are now focused on small wireless facilities at a much lower height and greater frequency and numbers. It's intended for those smaller antennas to fill in the gaps of the micro antenna coverage that exists. It's also to provide greater communication capacity as we continue to use more and more, use our phones more and more, and the data consumption continues to increase. The wireless providers have now focused upon wireless, the smaller wireless facilities since 2016, and there's been a significant interest in locating those facilities on existing streetlights and infrastructure throughout our community and beyond. And there are other options, but the streetlight accommodation is the most popular. There's also new federal, a federal ruling that includes a shortened time period or a clock, if you will, for us to process these applications as they come forward, and we now must complete that review within 90 days for a new apparatus going in, or 60 days if it's being co-located on an existing piece. As a result, the city attorney and development services staff drafted language that adds a new chapter to our municipal code and also amends our existing chapter, 1730, and it will ultimately introduce new standards for the small wireless facilities that include an administrative review process for the small wireless facilities. And the macro, the larger ones, will still have to go to the planning commission and obtain a conditional use permit. The focus is primary upon, primarily upon aesthetics and minimizing visual clutter or clustering, if you will, depending on how you look at that, and that's really based on the fact that we're limited really only to being able to focus on an aesthetic situation going forward. There were a series of meetings conducted by the planning commission in considering this topic over the last year plus. That included a stakeholders' meeting that was conducted last fall, in which we had three planning commission members and a number of wireless providers in attendance for that discussion, and as a result, the draft language was brought forward. And during the July 24th meeting last month of the planning commission, that draft ordinance that's before you this evening was considered by the commission, and after conducting a public hearing, they unanimously recommended city council approval of the ordinance that's before you for your consideration tonight. So with that, that concludes my report. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So do we have questions? We have the public hearing?
Not at this point, no.
So in simple terms, are we dealing, is this for 5G wireless?
Correct. The main, though it will accommodate, and I know there's other representative in the audience that could probably elaborate upon this, but it can accommodate other technology, but the 5G technology is really the big change that's occurring, and it has to have more of a direct-line connection with the user. So the frequency of the antenna throughout the system of the grid, if you will, is needed in order for that technology to be successful going forward.
Okay. And some of the questions I have, I know I emailed to you earlier today, I just want to make sure I get them out there for the public, anybody who may be watching who's concerned or interested in this topic. So is it, is it true that we don't have any of these small cell sites or few of them in our city right now?
We currently do not have any. There was one that was entitled by the planning commission about six or seven months ago. It has not been built to date, but that there is not one currently operating in our community.
Okay. So I've had a couple of questions from constituents, you know, and concerns from constituents about 5G and approval of these sites in our city because of potential safety hazards. Is city staff aware of any safety concerns or, you know, has the federal government released any information about any potential safety concerns related to these?
I know that, I know Michael can speak more to this than I can, so I'll defer to him if he wants to answer that.
Well, from my perspective, the primary departure in response to that question is really that the city's dealing with the federal preemption issue with our inquiry into potential health effects. The federal government has essentially said, we can't regulate in terms of radio frequency emissions on these things, as long as they meet federally established standards that they're required to be permitted. And so I have not personally looked at the issue of health effects directly, although I know the FCC certainly has published data and has information available if one would choose to look into that further.
Okay. And just to be clear, you know, that within our power, we can't make that determination, you know, we, as a city, have to approve these, subject to certain aesthetic limitations or restrictions or requirements. Is that right?
That is correct. The city's hands are very much tied in terms of the amount of discretion we have over these types of installations. The federal government has expressed its desire to facilitate rapid deployment of 5G technology, and in many ways has painted local governments as being an impediment and something that's slowing that process down. So with this more recent declaratory order, the intent really was to impose requirements that would require cities to help the rollout more than slow it down with our own locally drafted regulations and requirements.
Thank you.
Okay, so no questions. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and I know we have one speaker here, that was Michelle Brower. Thank you for being here.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Michelle Brower. I'm with Verizon Wireless, and I first just want to thank you for hearing this item tonight. I want to thank the city for taking the time to draft this ordinance, seeing the need to have some regulations within the city, having that stakeholders' meeting and meeting with the planning commissioners to understand, you know, what the city is looking for and also, you know, what our technology requirements were as well. So just want to greatly thank you guys for all of that. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Right now, just to answer one of the questions, the sites that we're personally looking at in the city of Los Alamos are actually 4G sites. So those are capacity sites. Our current macro network is meeting capacity. Therefore, you may be driving around, you find that your call's blocked, or it drops, or whatever it might be. It's not necessarily a coverage issue so much anymore, as a lot of these sites are capacity. There's just too many users all using the same site. So these small cells are aimed to help offload those existing sites and increase that capacity that the city and the constituents are looking for. So just really looking to bring technology to not only the constituents, but also public safety, also your business core. But again, happy to answer any other questions you may have, and thank you again for hearing this item.
Questions?
So these sites can be put on any public or private property?
So right now, what the small cells really are aimed at utilizing is existing infrastructure in the public right-of-way, which would be your SCE light standards that are out there currently, or also potentially utility poles that are out as well. Those would be our primary options as far as locating a site in the right-of-way.
And exempt from that would be anything military base-owned, I'm assuming?
If it's a military base, it would, it would probably be private property, and so it would be a different process.
If I could, one of the main reasons why the public infrastructure is so favorable is that there's a limitation on the maximum amount that can be charged for that. So it's become very favorable and much more feasible, so the direction and interest is there versus historically with, you know, the larger macro sites. They were usually on private property, and they were very costly per unit, but really now it's become, that focus has been, again, on primarily streetlights, and I know that the, a lot of the utilities or the cell providers have relationships with SCE and are working with them, which is a good thing for us, is they're standardizing the aesthetics, so we can all expect a certain appearance that I think is fairly... the aesthetics, so we can all expect a certain appearance that I think is fairly benign and not a, you know, not an aesthetic draw to the eye, if you will.
So you mentioned streetlights. Is that the primary location where these will be placed in the city?
We've yet to see, beyond the one that's come through for a time, we've yet to see that. But at least in some of the conversations we had, that was a lot of the focus. And we actually had SCE, our staff met with SCE and talked to them about this, and that really is the primary interest.
Okay. And just more specific, in terms of power poles in people's backyards, I know there's a lot of power lines and poles in some people's backyards. Would this permit installation on those? It's a private plot of land, although it's a public utility on that piece of land.
The, our provisions would not prevent that from happening. I think the bigger matter is if it would be something that SCE would desire to have. I know in my past experience, usually utility companies do not desire to see the cellular providers having infrastructure on those poles because of the relationship to electrical wires and the concern of that. The lady may be able to expand upon that, but that's really typically not a desirable environment for them to want to be on, and usually the utility is not supporting that type of a connection.
I may be able to add a little bit to that. Under our existing code, certain wireless facilities are technically allowed within residential zones with the CUP. So the rules being implemented by this new chapter are not inconsistent with the city's existing regulations, but what we've attempted to do is draft regulatory controls and aesthetic guidelines that would ensure that any installation is consistent and conforms to a high standard. So while we fully expect that the actual deployment will be within the public right-of-way based on some of the cost considerations Les has explained and based on information we've received from the carriers themselves, we wanted to go ahead and at least extend these controls to the extent we can to any other installations that may, however unlikely, appear on other private properties in the city.
But everything will still have to go through the CUP process? So they're just not going to be able to just go up and start installing these?
It would still be processed, but again, because of the timelines for review and approval and so forth, anything that falls within our definition of a small wireless facility will now be processed administratively through the development.
Right, but the city's going to have a record of where these facilities are.
We would see it, yes. We would absolutely see it, and they would adhere to these guidelines.
Okay. And I've got a pole in my backyard, so if that improves my coverage, by all means, come on in.
You're offering a second.
Please, it's yours.
Mark, is there anything else?
Yeah, so, I mean, is that the summary, though? One of these can be placed in residents' backyards?
Again, there's, there's the opportunity, there's the ability for that to be considered, but as with any of these, they're all reviewed on a case-by-case basis. So it's, is there that possibility? Yes. It would have to be consistent. We're not asking for anything different from a, the location of these antennas from what is currently, as was mentioned, that's currently in our code. So there is that, I guess, yes, there is that possibility, though I think at the end of the day, it's probably a fairly remote possibility that would occur.
Okay, thank you.
So I do have a few questions. Thank you, Michelle, for being here. So the one picture of an installation on a light pole, so I think to what our city attorney said about FCC regulations and stuff, so I do assume there's a limit to the radiated power that comes out of these, and your device would conform to all of those? And directional, omnidirectional, how's it going to be?
So currently, for our 5G deployment, it is a circular antenna, so it's going to be 360. That being said, we are governed by the FCC, so they do set safe operating standards that we must abide by, and these sites operate well below those standards. So they are-
Is there any check that you have on a whatever periodic maintenance basis to make sure the radiated power is not exceeding what is acceptable to the FCC?
So the city actually, as part of their application process, requires a report that shows what the max potential operating power is. And these typically, on a normal basis, operate well below that, but that shows what the max operating and that it would be in compliance. So that's actually a city requirement as part of our application as well.
But you don't periodically check those, make sure that it doesn't go, you know, one of your amplifiers goes crazy and-
We, we actually, once we install, we make sure, we have, these are all remote, so if there are any issues, it goes to our network operations center, which would say, okay, you know, there's some, you know, malfunction, please get out there as soon as possible and fix that. But the FCC, I mean, they could, at any point, go to any facility and test it, and we need to make sure that we're in compliance.
And then, and then when your operations center does notice something going less optimal, do you notify the city of something that may be malfunctioning?
You know, I, to be honest with you, typically, my understanding is, and I am not a maintenance person, but typically, if it's something that they can fix without closing off any streets, they'll go out there and fix it immediately. But if it's something that would require any type of street closure, traditionally, I do believe that they contact the city to get, you know, some sort of traffic control permit or get approval to go out there and close off any portion of the right-of-way.
So if you don't notify the cities, do you keep records of how many times these things start malfunctioning and what's the history, even on the 4G network?
And again, I'm not part of the network assurance team. I would assume that they do keep track of it. Usually, it's, when it's malfunctioning, it's just not even operating at that point. It's just shut off. So that's where they're getting out to replace as soon as possible.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be something, Les, I'll talk with you offline, maybe there's something we wanted to ask and just to make sure. So I have no other questions. Thank you for being here.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
One more?
Sure.
Maybe for staff. I've noticed that the facilities can't be more than 100 feet. They have to be at least 100 feet apart. My concern is, does, and I can't find it in here. I realize Verizon is one provider, and you've got AT&amp;T, and you've got a variety of other providers, maybe four, possibly five. Is it feasible that you could wind up with five of these on one pole, or do they have to? We have a control of how many can go on a pole. And then does that become first, come first serve?
I can answer it if you like. Just for SCE, they have certain requirements of what they will allow, and they actually will only allow one carrier per pole. So that's SCE's requirement, is just one carrier per light standard. One thing to keep in mind, when you do add multiple carriers to light standards, they do get much larger, so you're looking at a wider pole and also a taller pole. But SCE has taken the stance of just one per carrier.
These can't be installed on your existing monopole arrangements, or this is just to expand?
This is to further expand. So it's for those existing macro sites that are used to, they, a lot of them are hitting capacity. So it's, they can no longer handle all the traffic that is being asked of them. So these are to further augment that, that network.
Okay. Know also that you're in the process of creating a, and I think it's Verizon, I'm not sure, a special frequency or system for first responders.
I think you might be thinking of FirstNet, and that is actually, I believe, AT&amp;T. But Verizon does support first responders. Verizon is not doing the FirstNet, but they're basically creating a similar system. They take first responders and public safety very seriously, so they want to make sure that they have the flexibility to grow it and make sure it is as strong as possible so that in an emergency situation, first responders have that access.
And this doesn't conflict with what that is?
It'll actually help, it'll help augment that as well. So it just is part of our overall network that'll help that.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, so back to here to, thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak on the public hearing on this matter? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back here to the council. Is there a motion for the recommended-
This is the first reading, correct? So it still comes back to us? Yeah, I'll go ahead and move approval.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay. City Attorney, I guess we, you would have to read this?
If I could, I'll read it into the record and then take a vote on the motion, if you wouldn't mind. So before the council for consideration is the introduction of first reading of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Amending Section 17.30.030 of and Adding Chapter 17.31 to the Los Alamos Municipal Code Regarding the Deployment of Small Wireless Facilities Through Zoning Ordinance Amendment, ZOA 18-03."
Thank you. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so passes 4-0. Thank you. Next, we have 12A, which is first reading and introduction of ordinance number 2019-01, the Purchasing Ordinance Amendment. I guess it's to you, City Attorney, right?
Sure, I can provide a brief staff report. As you know, this item was initially brought forward to the council at your July 15th regular meeting as an overhaul and cleanup of the city's purchasing regulations. At that meeting, after deliberation by the council, a motion was made to reduce the dollar threshold for the formal procedure, purchasing procedure, and the $20,000 limit on the city manager's contract authority. The direction was to reduce both of those amounts to 20,000 and then remain, retain the bulk of the ordinance as proposed. We've gone ahead and made the changes per council's direction and have brought the ordinance back for your consideration this evening.
Okay, any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Go.
I'll second.
Hasselbrink, any other discussion? Okay. Oh, I will ask public comments. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comments. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, passes 4-0. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, could I, could I please read the title into the record?
Yes, I apologize. And then we'll take the vote.
Again, this is an ordinance being introduced for first reading. The ordinance entitled, "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Amending Chapter 2.60 Purchasing System of the Los Alamos Municipal Code."
Okay, so could we do the vote again? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 4-0. Okay, on to, what are we at? 13? 13A. Interesting one. So this one, it's an amendment to the employment agreement for interim city manager services. I am not going to ask for a staff report. I'm just going to go ahead and move.
Mayor, if I may, there are certain government code requirements for an oral report and summary.
Okay, then let's do it.
I can, I can go ahead and provide that now.
I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. As I stated, the government code requires an oral summary of changes to executive management, compensation, and salary. Before the city council for consideration tonight is an amendment to Les Johnson's employment agreement to enable him to provide interim city manager services effective August 16th, 2019, for a period of up to 90 days. During the tenure of his service as the interim city manager, Mr. Johnson would be compensated in the amount of $1,500 per bi-weekly pay period. And with that, I conclude my summary of the agreement.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion? I'll go ahead and move.
Second.
Jerko, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 4-0. Thank you. 13B, it is the discussion on video recording and broadcasting of traffic commission meetings. I guess to you, Les, are, we spoke about this one, we're going to move forward with this, or was there some?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, this is what's been brought before you as a result of a couple meetings back, there was a joint meeting with the Traffic Commission, and during that meeting, there was conversation and dialogue, and I believe Councilmember Hasselbrink brought up the idea of having the Traffic Commission meetings recorded and available for public viewing, televising, if you will. And as a result of that, we have gone through and provided a, for your discussion this evening, a summary of that information and really tried to, as best we could, identify the amount of activity that we are seeing or that we are aware of with regards to viewing of current council and planning commission meetings in order to maybe give you a bit of perspective of, again, what we believe we can capture and know that's being watched and as that may relate to your decision and discussion this evening. So with that, conclude the report there and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
One of the reasons I brought this forward is, you know, council meetings are recorded, and we're depending more and more on, on the minutes being more of the video minutes, and we do a summarized minutes, and same thing with the planning commission. And, you know, traffic in this city is huge. It's probably the number one concern of everybody here, even more so than planning, because we are a built-out city. And so, you know, I see the minutes from the Traffic Commission, and I may or may not know what they were doing. You don't get the intent, you don't get the overall conversation, the discussion back and forth. You usually just get what they were talking about and what the result was. And as we move forward and traffic is an ongoing issue that's never solvable, I just thought it would be nice to be able to be, to be able to see that, since relying on the minutes doesn't really give us the full breadth of the conversation and some of the options maybe they were considering or why they voted one way or the other, because we are relying more on the summarized minutes. And at a cost of about $180 a meeting, I just thought for memorializing things and being able to go back and replay. I know I watch the planning commission meetings just so I can kind of see what they're doing, you know, on our behalf, more than not. So I just thought that the Traffic Commission would be nice just to be able to have that memorialized on video.
Thank you. Dean, Danny?
You know, I don't think I can support this, and the reason behind that is, is that we're facing huge financial issues moving down. And until such time, we're going to talk about it next. But until such time as we reconcile new revenue, new methods of, of funding what we're doing, this is another 2,000, $2,500 a year. I recognize your intent, Shelley, and I support that, but I just, I'm hesitant to want to go further down on things that we're currently not spending money on, so.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
Yes, I'm on the fence on this one. I agree with both Shelley and Dean, but, but when I look at the viewership numbers, you know, we, we don't get that many people watching as much as it shocks us. We don't get that many people watching our city council meetings at home. What do they have better to do, is what I wonder? I mean, come on. Netflix can't compete with this. But, you know, I, I just think, you know, the cost per viewing is going to be high on the Traffic Commission, in all likelihood, because they deal with a more narrow issue. We're probably going to get a smaller viewership, and at 180 bucks, we get 18 people, 20 people. It's $10 a person to view the Traffic Commission meeting. It would come in handy sometimes, and we would use it, I'm sure, from time to time, but I'm, I'm kind of thinking the same way that Councilmember Gross says, that we got to really button down and try not to spend money where we, where we can avoid it.
And I wasn't necessarily looking at, you know, being a Nielsen family and for the ratings by any means. Trust me, I do have better things to do with my time as well. Then my other option would be either one, that we sit here in the meeting and we're able to watch it, which that's usually discouraged because we want to let the commissions being able to act on their own without any of our influence, whatever that may be. Or I would like to ask then for a more detailed of the minutes rather than just the topic and it passed or it failed. I think if we can't rely on a video, then we need to have something that we can rely on, because otherwise, it's just hearsay. And many times, I found out what the Traffic Commission did through my neighbors, and I look back at the minutes and like, wow, where'd that, where'd you get that from, type thing? Because what I'm reading, I read it very differently because it was so summarized. So I'll go either way. The intent truly wasn't so that more people could watch Channel 3 and a Traffic Commission meeting, because that was just what they were waiting for. It was more, I want to know what's kind of going on. So when we have a parking permit program or we have whatever issue they're coming up with, you know, timed parking or overnight parking, we can really see what's going on. So when we are approached by our neighbors, we kind of understand the intent of why they supported or denied something.
So from my perspective, and Les and I had a discussion on this issue, and I, and I'll formulate a motion of some type when I get to it, but I, you know, I think to the Traffic Commissioners, we look at this, I look at this, as we're trying to elevate what you do and bring it out there in the public domain so people can watch, whether it's live or after the fact or as a historical record. And that's what we've relied on for our meetings here. We have summary minutes as well as the video evidence. But I get the sense of the four of us up here, probably be a split if we go anywhere. But the motion I want to make on this one is that we take this item, share it with the Traffic Commission, and let them kind of determine, because I think there is some concern on their part. Do they favor this, or do they really want to go with not summary minutes but more detailed minutes and kind of report back to here? So it's not to kill this idea right here, but, and then when Richard's back, you know, when we come back here and we have the full council, then we get really a, I think, a clear, you know, direction how the council will vote on this. So my motion will be is to refer this to the Traffic Commission, let them kind of make a self-determination, this is something that, that, understanding our intent, and Councilmember Hasselbrink's intent- This is something that, understanding our intent and Councilmember Hasselbrink's intent, do they favor that or would we look at more detailed minutes and not the summary minutes and then report back to us? And whether, and if they say that they would not want that, I think your recommendation will come back, that the traffic commission does not favor this video recording of theirs and they will adopt, you know, detailed minutes. Or they'll take the, this, you know, elevate this to the public domain so we can all view that. So my motion, kind of long-winded, is that we refer it back to the traffic commission and have them weigh in on this. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Hasselbrink, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Four oh. Thank you. Last one is thirteen C. And this is the fiscal sustainability pros and cons list to report to council. And I kind of read through it briefly. I know Richard kind of says to my colleagues over here that are on the ad hoc, you've already, you've already seen this and you've lived it and probably spent a lot more hours on it. So in the hopes of not trying to rehash a lot of that. So I have just a few questions structurally. I don't know, maybe for members of the public who want to go through some report. But Dean, did you have any questions on this?
I did because some of this seems to be written in first-person approach and I'm not sure who the first person is.
Okay. So how about, the city manager, could we have a staff report on this?
Mayor, council members, I'll ask if our fiscal sustainability manager, David Keane, could provide a brief staff report regarding this?
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to. Good evening, mayor and city council members. As you indicated, this has been a lot of hard work that's been put together by the budget standing committee as well as city staff. Kind of to give you a highlight on it, everybody looked at all of the pros and cons as related to expenditure cuts, revenue enhancement options. As part of this process was the development of a ten-year financial plan, looking at where the city will be down the road. And what that clearly identifies is, 10 years out, that becomes a structural budget deficit of $3.4 million. We're identifying a structural budget deficit that would start next year. And so without taking extraordinary measures, that's the position that we'll be in. So one of the questions that gets asked a lot of times is what has the city done up to this point in time? And the city has done a lot in terms of looking at cutting their own costs, reducing programs, activities that are going on. There's 25 less full-time employees than there was 10 years ago. Another contributing factor to that is we do not have control over pension costs and retiree medical costs. What the city has done proactively though is the employees are picking up their full share of their retirement costs, whether it's an eight or nine percent deduction out of their paychecks. State of California continues to take money away. And a lot of times residents don't really understand or appreciate the challenges that we face from a property tax perspective. We get a little bit more than 10 and a half cents on each property tax dollar that comes locally to the city of Los Alamos. So those are all things that impact where we're at. We also have, the city has adopted budget policy or fund balance policies. So there are assigned and restricted monies that are set aside so that really limits the available cash available to balance a structural deficit on a go-forward basis. So there's a lot of challenges for the city, as I indicated in the staff report. Doing nothing is not an option. What we are doing is expanding the existing 10-year out to 20-years. We're reaching out to the community, conveying this information to the community. We had a chat, we had the opportunity to meet with the chamber breakfast, talk with the nonprofit groups. We will continue to do that throughout the community. We are in the process of securing a firm. We've gone out and got RFPs and have three responses to an organization that would help us with the community. Survey is a scientific approach to getting feedback from the community and their priorities. And we're developing a proactive calendar in terms of how we reach out to the community along with kind of a one-page overview. So that's kind of where we're at at a very high level. May I be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Dean, do you have questions?
Yeah, as long as I'm going to start, that's fine. I have to say that, reading this through twice now, I'm disappointed. We were told that by 25, 26, which is hardly 10 years, that we're going to be underwater. Most every one of these recommendations or discussions in here has a single pro and all kinds of cons. And I'm looking for creativity from the standpoint of how we get things done. We had a meeting with the chamber and if I'm not mistaken, that meeting was back in June. One of the discussions at that meeting was we were going to hold community meetings with other stakeholders on a regular basis and start to roll this out. There were some terrific PowerPoint slides in that presentation. It went to the Chamber of Commerce and was well-received. The Chamber of Commerce, for the most part, doesn't reflect taxpayers. It reflects businesses that are in town. And they, they can have an impact from the standpoint of the quality of life here, but we need to be getting to the actual people that are taxpayers, that are, that need to understand the true facts of where we're going. Some of this, to me, just simply says, well, we're going to reduce maintenance and operations in each department. There's three pros and four cons. I just don't get it. I'm seeing more of the reasons why we can't do any of these than why we can. The only reason we can is it produces annual savings. But what happens to the services that are being provided? I'm not seeing in this report what I had hoped to see in that regard. The section in here that talks about the police department, and the police department is our largest department from the standpoint of financial demands, close to 50% or a little bit more of what the city is. And discussions in here talked about potentials combining police departments with surrounding cities. We currently have a JPA that does the dispatching. And that JPA covers Cypress, Los Alamos, and Seal Beach. The way it's set up right now with the JPA through the new CAD system that was put in down there at sizable expense, the closest responsible officer is going to go regardless of whose it is. So the idea being, I'm in Los Alamos and I dial 911, it could be a Cypress cop that shows up because they're closer to the call than the Los Alamos cops are. It's a matter that we're getting the service, we're not necessarily doing it specifically with the city. So the discussions in here about the potential combining of police services through another GPA, or another JPA, rather, reflects all the reasons it can't be done. Nobody wants to do it when we're talking the other cities. It shows in here on E-10 as an example, the switch of a sworn captain versus a civilian manager, which we had in this city for many years. 1996, as I recall, when that started, the police department went up and had a strategy meeting that occurred, I think, up in the mountains, came back and said, no, we need to have a sworn officer there. This says that by eliminating that sworn officer and going back to the civilian, it's going to save $56,700 in salary and benefits. Yet when we did it, it cost us $85,000 because it switched from civilian purrs to public safety purrs. It switched from no car to having to buy another car for that captain. The captain that was originally hired for that position transferred over to a different section. And a second captain was brought in that came back and worked in that session. I just don't, you know, I don't see the history here from the standpoint of what's been going on within the community and how we can look at hard decisions that we have to make. There are several references in here on E-10 on the second page. The only pro is, is that it's cheaper. Actually, not a whole lot. I am wondering, or I am working on numbers for the comparison between promoting from within versus hiring outside for a civilian manager. I don't know who that I is. Is that the police department or is that you? We brought you in for that purpose to help coordinate it, as I understand. And now I hear you talking about hiring another company to figure out how we engage with the community and to help us set up those, those meetings that need to occur. I don't know who approved that. I don't know where we came up with another consultant to add to this situation. And we're talking about spending money that we haven't got to spend and yet we got a problem. When are we going to get serious about what we're doing? We have a problem from the standpoint of costs keep going up. This report says that we, during the last 10 years, we've eliminated 25 full-time positions. And I'm not sure where that really comes from. Some of it's Parks and Recreation. We talk about, in this report, Parks and Recreation being contracting out. I don't see the alternatives. You know, I want to see what alternatives we have. How do we continue to provide the services and what do we need to do? We tried to get commercial over here across the street from the, from the city. We're going to get a corporation coming in there, an international corporation. It's going to bring in about 600 people, hopeful that those 600 people are going to shop in the community and increase the revenue stream. We've got to be working with the businesses in this town to see how we can help them increase. There's things available through the state that are called enterprise zones that potentially could help us enhance some of that. The hotel coming in across the street, the 108-room Marriott, we were told was going to generate $275,000 a year in brand-new revenue. That's what we need to be talking about. What are we going to find and how do we go about doing that to find this brand-new revenue? Because we're not getting it any other way. If we don't increase the tax base, and there's references in here about, about increasing the sales tax and what that's going to do, even some of that says it's not going to sustain us. It's not going to bring it along. Contracting out and on some of these other things, it's just not going to sustain us. So do we continue to do the programs? These are the things I think that we need to be discussing here, is what is it going, what kind of services? And this has to be the community engaged. We've got to have community meetings with the different neighborhoods on a regular basis. What can we do? They need to be involved in helping us to try and understand, look, guys, we've got a problem. We've got more expenditures and less revenue. How do we increase one or reduce the other? Are you willing to give up all the Parks and Recreation programs? That means no programs at all? Are you willing to give up maintenance on the streets? And yet we just, you know, they just approved Prop One that's supposed, which we didn't support, which is supposed to be giving us revenue to fix streets. Our streets are miserable. We're not doing the stuff we should be doing to fix these streets. We're sitting with, we're sitting with reserve money that we've prudently put aside. Maybe we should just be spending that money now fixing the streets and go broke sooner and then figure out who's going to take us over. You know, I want to know, we're in the sphere of influence for Rossmore. Rossmore doesn't provide a great deal of financial or sales tax revenue, although they have some good ones on that fourth corner over there. If Rossmore were to incorporate with Los Alamos, is that an option? Is that going to bring in more revenue and less expenses because we're merging? We've talked about the idea of the county doing stuff here to make it more convenient for Rossmore to pull building permits. I'm not happy with the report, obviously. And I want to see us get down to the brass tacks of what we're going to have to do because we can't afford to continue just to kick this down the road. It's coming at us. It's coming at us quick. And we need every single month and every single day to be engaging with the community and find out. We need these community meetings where the residents can come in and say, this is what we need to do. I'll stop with the rest of you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dean. So I'll express disappointment in a different way. And I know that my colleagues here worked on it very, very diligently along with the staff. But the one thing I would like to see in this, on these, any of these pros and cons, the savings that, that we will realize from reduced pension obligation, because that, I think, ought to factor into this because we've got this, this tidal wave that's going to crush us. And if there are, as Councilmember Gross says, if there are things that we can do from contracting out versus having our own in-house pensionable salaries, there'll be a savings there. So we'll have that component. So is that something that I'm looking at, is that something that we can do? Dave?
Okay. One of the things that every city is faced with is your CalPERS program today with the pension reform that happened in 2013 changed the dynamics on everything. And so any of your tier-one entities, which everybody has them because they all existed at the time, is that pension cost is now a fixed cost amortized over a 20-year period of time. So that is a large annual payment that is required to be made by the city.
But will it be on a plateau and it'll stay steady? It's still going to escalate up year over year, correct?
It will. Based on the 20-year amortization, it will go up before it goes down and then goes away. But it is a fixed cost that will be there whether you have a full complement of staff or you have zero staff.
And it's going to go away after 20, after 20 years? Not, it's not going to be gone at 20 years. It's going to still escalate, it'd be a downward slope.
The unfunded liability portion on the tier-one is then paid off at that point. That still doesn't change the fact that you're still paying, that the employees are still paying their percentage and the city is paying an annual percentage based on the most current actuarial information.
That's going to be 20, 40, 20? I mean, it's way out there, right?
Right.
2050 and so, again, that curve's not changing. That's, so, so I think any of these things ought to, at least, to me, I'd want to see how that, how any decision we make affects that. Because of course, want to flatten that thing out, want to reduce it as low as it can. And I want to see it on a downward slope, right? That'd be the idea. And that's a kind of a make or a buy question. Should we actually have organ, you know, these, these services in-house versus contract out and buy it by the pound, right? Because I think that's one of the things that we ought to weigh in on, you know, to Councilmember Gross at this point, now really get down to brass tacks. The other thing, I guess, the one thing I really want to understand, which would be controversial, merger and acquisition. What happens if we merge with somebody? What happens if we disincorporate? I mean, those are options as well that I would like to see monetized here in this because, yeah, drastic measures, but if we're not an ongoing concern, I mean, why prolong the agony? I mean, there's a lot of, I'll say the tax, tax aspects of it, which, you know, I'm, one of them I really just will not support, but some of the other ones, I understand why. But the sales tax, I won't support. But the parcel tax, okay, I can, I might be convinced if I see the, kind of the benefit where we're going to, again, start, start depressing that escalation curve, start actually, you know, flattening it out and turning it down, or, you know, a downward slope. But I don't know how you bring that into this. And that's, you know, to my colleagues over here, I'm, you probably spent a lot of time working this, right? So if that's something that you can all look at. And then the merger part, what happens if we do merge beyond the police department? What if we look at, not incorporated Rossmore, which has a very rich property pack space, which might be interesting to, to look at, but a neighboring city? That may be something we have to do. And, you know, we think of the payroll that we eliminate, which is not very, you know... we eliminate, which is not very, you know, not one of the things we want to do, but I think that's a reality we ought to look at because if we can't afford to be a city, we ought not to be a city, right? I mean, as harsh as that sounds. So just, just my kind of two cents on that, but I, I think that it's a good start. I think this is not the endpoint, right?
It never was the endpoint.
Yeah.
So I'm. So if I may, to a couple of your points, is, one, to disincorporate, the county would have to approve it. The county is not in a position to take on our unfunded liability and has no interest in doing so. I've had that conversation with individuals. When it comes to bankruptcy, first of all, you need to be in a position where you're in default, which we're not currently at this point, and you're gonna have to prove to a bankruptcy judge that you're eligible for bankruptcy. In the city of San Bernardino's case, they had to fight CalPERS for their eligibility. It cost them about $6 million to prove that they were, in fact, bankrupt. And then at that point, you still gotta move forward with bankruptcy costs. Your attorney's fees in San Bernardino were a total of about $35 million.
So Vallejo went into bankruptcy.
Vallejo.
And then they, they were close to going back in and then Stockton went in, I think it was to Stockton?
Stockton, Vallejo, San Bernardino have all, through the bankruptcy process, have not impaired CalPERS. So nobody has been successful to date to impair the pension side of this equation.
And then Mammoth Lakes went into bankruptcy for a different reason, right? They lost the lawsuit. But anyways, again, just kind of comments back. And then one thing to city clerk, I guess, on any of these ballot measures, if you can put that on the strategic calendar, when we would have to start considering it, not that we will, but just so we have, because it's not, it won't be, July will be too late next year, right, for the ballot measures? We'll probably have to put it in the May timeframe to start thinking about it?
The last day to add it to consolidate with the county of Orange is actually early August.
Yeah, right.
That's the absolute drop dead deadline.
We need to consider it before that, right?
Right.
So, so we're not gonna miss out on that opportunity?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you can add it to the strategic calendar, just as a bookmark, a placeholder. And that's just kind of my comments. I want to thank staff and the subcommittee here.
Mayor, if I could, just in response, first of all, thank you for the comments provided. We will, we are currently working on and will be prepared to bring something back to the subcommittee and to council with regards to our schedule to meet with, you know, the community at large. We want to hear that feedback, absolutely. This is, we don't believe this is a done deal at all. We're just starting this process. We also are in the process of creating a backwards schedule, too. So those items are already in the works, we've been talking about that. As well as getting factual information out, we want to make sure that a very quick summary of, of the efforts underway are captured into a single page, either single-sided, double-sided document that we can have available as we meet with those in the community that are interested to talk with us and give us their feedback, as well as to have available electronically for the community to be able to grasp what this is about and what's happening. So we're definitely in line with a lot of the general comments we're hearing. We're already working on that and we'll definitely keep council apprised as we venture forward.
And then to the ad hoc subcommittee comment, did you want to?
I'm just, honestly, I'm at a loss. And to have the first word of feedback, as disappointed, I'm offended. I really am. The expectation that we set out was, we were gonna come back with a number of ideas, whether they were good, bad, or indifferent, for us to massage as a group. We were coming back with data points. It was merging departments, it was outsourcing departments, it was taxes. You know, we came back with 21 different ideas with no opinion on any of them. We did get some feedback of merging police departments. Cypress and Seal Beach isn't interested, so we can talk about it all we want. They're not interested. Outsourcing our park and rec, to who? Long Beach ain't interested, even though they could do it on their phone, they're not interested. Incorporating with Rossmore, guess what? That's failed over and over again. That's not our control. So we had to look at things that are in our control. We looked at outsourcing the police department, we looked at outsourcing everything, we brought back the data, we did not say that we were gonna come back with, here's the solution. There are 21 different ideas that we have here and if you have more, by all means, bring them on. We're not afraid of anything. But to come back here after 10 months of work to say that you're disappointed, that offends me. It really, really does. It is not up to us because if we would've come back with recommendations, we would've been told, well, what about the rest of the council? Where's our input? So here it is. But disappointed bothers me so much, you have no idea.
And I apologize if you're taking it personally.
Oh, I am.
It was not intended, it was not intended to be that way. We're all up here in the same vote, we're all elected by the same voters, we all have the same responsibilities. And my, my concerns were, what we've seen in here, for example, some of the tax things, nothing's really rated in the process of exactly what that will do.
The numbers are there. What, what, what do you mean, what they'll do? Taxes increase revenue. The numbers are there. This is how much revenue it'll bring in. I don't understand, what more do you want? I mean, you're, you're criticizing something that's written in a third person versus the first person. I mean, these are ideas, these are brainstorming ideas that we wanted to get on paper with data points that we could further massage down as a group of five. This is what we did.
And this is sort of the first step. I mean, we needed to get a pros and cons list and if you do think anything's missing from the pros or cons, or you think any options are missing, feel free to, to add those, to email those to, to the city manager, to our fiscal sustainability manager. We can address any of those, but broad comments like, we need to get to the people, that's not tangible enough for us. We, we need pros, we need cons, we need real solutions. And that's what we've tried to do here. Is it perfect? Perhaps not, but, you know, there's not a lot of time. The city's gonna be bankrupt if we don't do something. And we gotta, we gotta drill down and get actual items we can or cannot do. And that's what's begun here. That's what we started here. So to the extent you think any pros or cons on any of these options are missing, let's, let's go through it. Let's do one by one. To the extent you think any actual possibilities, any courses of action are missing, we can go through those, too. Some of those, as Shelley mentioned, are just not gonna happen. We're not gonna get Cypress to combine with us or, or, you know, Long Beach is not gonna take over our Parks and Rec department. But, you know, let's be productive, let's be, you know, let's come up with some tangible work here.
And I concur with you. I'm not, I'm not opposed from that standpoint. I guess I expected more and I apologize if that expectation.
So Dean, be specific. What were you expecting?
I was expecting some prioritizing.
That, no, that's what we do as a group. We came up with 21 ideas.
Okay.
And if we took that to the public, their head would explode. So now, we have 21 ideas and if you think we missed something, bring it on and we'll add a 22nd, 23rd. But now, as a group of five, now we get to take those 21 ideas and prioritize them as a group.
Okay.
That, that's, that was our whole mission, that we wanted to take all those ideas, stick them on a piece of paper with data points, pros and cons, timing, and dollar amounts of either savings or increased revenue. And that's what you have before you.
Okay.
Now it's up to us as a five to say, out of those 21, what makes sense that we can now take to the public and educate them.
I understand. Prior, when we were trying to do budget closures, things came in to talk about traffic meters, parking meters for traffic. We went a different direction on that, yet we spent a lot of time and money dealing with Seal Beach and their program, the kinds of meters, and we didn't go anywhere. They didn't, they didn't get put in. We put timing on, on two hours and three hours and in some areas, four hours. Is there a feasibility to, to look at parking meters and exactly what kind of revenue would we have out of something like that?
And we could rejuvenate that, but when we did it four years ago, the revenue wasn't there versus the public outcry of not wanting it. So we could absolutely throw that in there?
The public, public can outcry all they want to. If, if we're not here, if, if the city is defunct, if you will, then it makes no sense. What, and, and the discussion regarding the bankruptcy, I think, is healthy. You know, who does that? What does it really do in the process? And, you know, so, and we're not alone. This is not a single thing that Los Alamos is. Every other city is facing it in different directions. What's gonna happen when all of the cities crumble? Does it go to the county? The county says, we're not picking it up? Then does it go to the state? You know, we're faced with something that we can't control. All we can do is try to figure out other options and other, other solutions in that particular process.
And there you go, there's 21 of them.
I understand.
And if you need 22, 23, and 24, bring them up, we'll do them.
Okay.
Well, I'll go through it more thoroughly in that regard and, and try to figure out, but I was hoping to see other, other types of options of how we can, what we can do.
So I think, again, I think the invitation for us, then Dean, is to feed it to Les.
Okay.
Is to then have that go to him and then it'll get disseminated to the ad hoc. Okay, I think it's fair. And again, thank you and do apologize for that. That, if, you know, again, the feedback is probably a little harsh, so apologize for that. Okay, so this is receiving file. I don't think we need a motion or anything like that, just, it actually is just the way it is. So thank you, ad hoc, and nothing else said? So we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to our next meeting on September 15th? Is that right?
I think so.
So meeting adjourned, thank you.
16th, September 16th.
If you want some sign, bring it on up, please. Any?